Michelle, you having a good summer?
Yeah.
You've got a lot of work done. More than missing. Reconstruction missing. Okay, I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. First on the agenda is a review and approval of a statement of interest for the Foxborough High School project. Go ahead.
Thank you. We have, and I use "we" in a way I probably shouldn't because Paul Jackson and Michael Leary and others have done a tremendous amount of work on analyzing the needs of a high school here and figuring out, I think, an ever-evolving Massachusetts School Building Authority process and regulatory process. And we did spend time at a meeting discussing this in a lot more detail. I think the point of tonight is that we're concerned that we have everything approved by July 31st, which is in the regulation, and that we highlight the right areas that we think the School Building Authority should pay attention to for Foxborough High School. And that we also have not only approval from the Board of Selectmen, which we received earlier this week on Monday, Monday night?
Tuesday.
Tuesday night. And that unanimous approval from the Board of Selectmen. And we want to make sure that we follow all of the steps. And as I mentioned to the board the other night, I look at this as putting us in line for consideration by the School Building Authority. And it's all breaking new ground as far as I'm concerned because they've changed some of the regulations. And so we want to comply with that and make sure that the state pays attention to Foxborough High School and the needs that we have. So what Paul Jackson and Michael Leary have spent a great deal of time at looking at the priority list and trying to fit in and figure out what the needs are here at the high school and where they would fit in in certain places, and I think they've hit just the right places. And let me, just for the public's sake and interest, tell you about the eight categories, the eight priorities, and then talk about the specific ones that we believe the high school fits into. The first one that we believe it fits into is number one, replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren when no alternative exists. The second one, elimination of existing severe overcrowding, we don't believe that fits Foxborough High School. Number three, prevention of the loss of accreditation, we don't believe that fits at this point in time. Prevention of severe overcrowding expected to result in from increased enrollments, and I think that's a mixed opinion right now, but we don't believe at this point in time. And again, we can amend these, I believe, as we go along if we find that conditions change. Number five, we believe fits, replacement, renovation, or modernization of the heating system in a schoolhouse to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in the schoolhouse, we believe that does fit. Short-term enrollment growth, number six, we don't believe that fits. Number seven, we believe fits, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And then the eighth one, we don't believe, transition from court order to approve racial balance school districts to walk to so-called or other school districts. So we've gone through, the document that you have had is the sample draft that we would submit, and it goes into detail. What we need tonight is a resolution read into the record. We did this with the Board of Selectmen, we think that's one of the regulations and requirements as well. An approval tonight if the committee believes that we've hit this in the right places. And then, and the reason we're doing it tonight is because this is the, we'll have only two meetings, open meetings of the school committee this month, and we need to make sure that we hit that July 31st deadline. So we thought the best thing to do would be to discuss it tonight, take action on it tonight, and then have the minutes ready to be approved Monday night, and then we'll be set to go. So we think that's the best. We had another idea that Paul and I were talking about, and that would be to have the meeting Monday night, do that one item adjourn, do the minutes, and then bring up the rest of the items. But we think this is a much better way to do it. But we do want to make sure that we abide by and adhere to. So if at this point in time, and I can go through the reasons, but why don't I read the resolution?
Okay.
And that will cover all the areas, and then someone can make a motion, and then we can discuss.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. July 16th, 2007, this is for next week, but resolved having convened in an open meeting, the school committee in the town of Foxborough in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances has voted to authorize, and in fact, I'm going to amend this to today, the 13th.
July 13th.
July 13th. Let me do that. Let me start that again then. Resolved having convened in an open meeting on July 13th, 2007, the school committee in the town of Foxborough in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances has voted to authorize the superintendent of schools to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest dated July 18th, that's after the approval, for the Foxborough High School located at 120 South Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority category or categories for which Foxborough may be invited to apply to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority one, for the quote, "replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren", unquote. And we put three areas, bulleted areas. The first one is roofing system is in need of replacement as it is near the end of its expectant life and has developed continual leaks. Second one is asbestos abatement required to facilitate further renovations. The third one is fire alarm system has exceeded its useful life and needs to be brought up to current code. Priority number five, for the quote, "replacement, renovation, or modernization of the heating system in a schoolhouse to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in the schoolhouse", unquote. And the areas that we've highlighted there. First one is single-pane windows are approaching 36 years of age, are not energy efficient and should be replaced. On cold and windy days, some rooms are unable to be heated to 68 degrees, requiring students and staff to wear coats in the classroom. The second one, hot water tanks are original, approximately 36 years old, and should be replaced. They require the boilers to be run in the summer to produce hot water. The third one is unit ventilators are original and require replacement to work efficiently. The third one, energy management systems/controls, it was recommended by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges Commission of Public Secondary Schools in March 2001 during their accreditation process that the HVAC problems throughout the school need repair. The next one, boiler systems are original and should be replaced prior to further deterioration and/or failure. The next one, roofing system is in need of replacement as it is near the end of its expectant life and has developed continual leaks. And the next one is asbestos abatement is required to facilitate further renovations. So that's priority five. Priority seven, for the quote, "replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements", unquote. The first area, science laboratories need to be renovated to meet the new MCAS requirements, requiring students to pass a science component in order to graduate. The New England Association of Schools and Colleges Commission of Public Secondary Schools in March of 2001 also recommended refurbishing the science laboratories in their evaluation. The second one, unit ventilators are original and require replacement to work efficiently. Third one, hot water tanks are original, approximately 36 years old, and should be replaced. They require the boilers to be run in the summer to produce hot water. Third one, energy management systems/control, it was recommended by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges Commission of Public Secondary Schools in March 2001 during their accreditation process that the HVAC problems throughout the school need repair. The next one, boiler systems are original and should be replaced prior to further deterioration and/or failure. The next one, toilet rooms are all original and require renovations to meet current codes. The next one is door hardware is all original and needs replacement to meet current codes. The next one, gymnasium floor is original and needs replacement. The next one, roofing system is in need of replacement as it is near the end of its expectant life and has developed continual leaks. The next one, single-pane windows are approaching 36 years of age, are not energy efficient and should be replaced. On cold and windy days, some rooms are unable to be heated to 68 degrees, requiring students and staff to wear coats in the classrooms. The next one, asbestos abatement is required to facilitate further renovations. And the last one in priority seven, fire alarm system has exceeded its useful life and needs to be brought up to current code. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that in submitting this statement of interest, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits Foxborough Public Schools to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Do you have anything to add, Paul?
I think we need a motion first, and then...
Can we have a motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Katie made the motion. Kate, second it. Any discussion on this?
Other than I, I think Paul, he could get a better job of reading it than I did.
No, actually...
No, I think you did an awesome job.
I just have a couple of concerns. Under prevention of loss of accreditation, I don't think we necessarily have to worry about it now, but in the upcoming accreditation, if we don't do something about the science labs, I think we will be put in a position where we're going to be held accountable for it. So I don't know whether that would be a consideration because, I mean, they didn't say we would lose our accreditation, but I'd be hard pressed to think they would re-accredit us with the current situation that we have in the science labs. So I don't know if that...
Well, I think the timing, the fact that it was 2001 doesn't help in this particular process.
No.
Because I think you're absolutely right. I think that a visiting team would look at the science labs and...
To think that we didn't do anything about it.
Right. And would be much more clear about the need to do that and the potential loss of accreditation.
Okay.
Now, I think that's a little premature right now.
We don't fall in that category. Okay. And the other, just the other two things, I don't know if we need to word it stronger. When you talk about the toilet rooms and the door hardware, current codes, should we allude to the fact that they're not handicap compliant at this point? Would that be a little wording that a little bit stronger when you meet current codes? It kind of leaves it open a little bit, and I think the two areas that we're going to be concerned about is the fact that they're not, our doors are not handicap accessible. Some of the toilets, on the second page, see here, toilet rooms are originally required renovations.
Yeah, that's one, that's really one, right. This is the resolution, but that's what we're going to give them this.
Go on, just, okay, all right.
So we'll go back to that on page eight.
Okay.
Thirty-five, under toilet rooms accessibility, 35-year-old building is not constructed to meet Massachusetts Architectural Access Board MMAD 521 CMR requirements.
All right, so we don't have to...
No, we don't have to put it in the resolution.
Okay, all right.
But they'll have all the backup data.
All right.
And any more data that they need, actually, any more information...
Because it'll be in this.
We have the McGuire report, we have, and again, because this is such a new process, I'm not sure what the next steps are going to be. Hopefully, they'll ask us if they have questions for any kind of information.
Martha, falling back on what you were saying, though, about what NEASC had recommended, they also said in 2001 during the accreditation process that the HVAC problems throughout the school needed repairs. There's another...
Yeah, potential.
Potential, you know, stipulation. And again, I think maybe what you're saying is just to be sure that we're highlighting that because, in fact, you know...
When they come around again, they're not going to allow it to continue.
One of the things, too, I mean, it seems, and number one, obviously, you know, that the replacement is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing health and safety, which it really seems like some of these things are very glaring to me. And one of the things, it's listed on the last, the very last example here under priority seven, and that's the fire alarm system. But in reading, rereading the, reading through this more comprehensive statement of interest, the fire alarm system clearly says it poses a safety issue. Am I right to say that they say there are no smoke detectors in any ductwork in the building?
That's correct.
So that means that there are no smoke detectors? I'm assuming there are in classrooms. Yes or no?
I can't swear to you that there are smoke detectors in the classrooms. I can tell you that there aren't any ductwork because when a building was built, it was not a code requirement.
Okay.
Where today it would be.
So again, reading through this and hearing, you know, understanding that the roof is in need and the structural beams and all of that, and then, you know, understanding that there's no smoke detectors in the structural, you know, above the ceiling is, again, to me, very glaring that that's a real safety issue if something were to happen, if there were some kind of weather event, you know, that, you know, that obviously the roof, yours is clearly stated in here, too, that, you know, that it doesn't have to be a major problem to cause the roof to have major problems with it. So I guess, I'm just, you know, I'm wondering, that fire alarm system is down there. And again, I don't know if they're all equally, I mean, I'm assuming they're all equally important, but...
I think as long as it's included, and then it's highlighted in this report, because this really spells it out.
It's just that some of these things, to really read this, it's a little frightening to think about what the potentials are structurally to this building if we do not get some kind of, you know, plan in place to, obviously, to repair. So I was really struck with that as well as the asbestos.
Kate, I think what everybody needs to understand, and throughout the system and in the town, is that this project needs to be done, whether the state funds it or not.
Right.
And I think that's why stating as strong a case as we can, even for the public here and now, is important, and that, I think, is what the McGuire Group and Paul and Mike and...
Oh, yes.
Have done. So I think the point is there. We just need to take the first step, and if we don't get the first step, then we have to go to the ground.
Right. I think it's just important to re-highlight as people are watching so that they understand we're going through all of this for, you know, real reasons, and it's, you know, I think just more information, like you said, if, in fact, this does not, we do have a problem with this statement of interest, that, again, it is something that's going to happen. And I think just reading this, it really speaks to really all the, so you did a great job, and I appreciate all the detail.
As a group effort.
Yeah, well, I know, I know, but it's very comprehensive.
I would just like to suggest, on the second page under priority seven, the third bullet from the bottom, where it's addressing the single-pane windows, the second sentence, it says, "On a cold and windy day, some rooms are unable to be heated." As I understand it, as we've discussed here many times, it's not just some, and some is like several to me, several's more than two, but some is not indicative of perhaps what we have. As I understand it, as we've discussed it with Mike Leary, is that because it's one of the, actually, the wings on the second floor, the heat's not, the heat's not reaching. And you have a whole line of classrooms where both the teachers and the students, in the wintertime, January and February, when the temperature drops and stays below, they can't get the heat up there. So respectfully, I just might like to suggest that we might insert the word "many" to give a breadth and depth. It's not a few rooms, it's, we really have a wing, almost an entire wing of the building, which we can't get...
I think it's first and second floor because the science wing's on the end, the end rooms are...
Well, my, as I understand it, they do, when they get the temperature from one, they crank it up, so one will overheat and the others, they still don't get it upstairs. But I think many may convey rather than some.
All right. So I guess we need a vote on this, and then we'll have the minutes for Monday night, and we'll accept them, mainly because we need to be able to have everything in place. So I'd like a...
I'd be happy to make that motion to...
Well, we already made the motion.
To approve this.
Approve the resolution.
So I thought that was to discuss.
Okay.
We are approved, we've already...
All right. So Kate will make the motion to accept.
I'll second it.
Katie will second it. All those in favor? Three in favor.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. We have two sets of draft minutes here. One is, we'll do the first one April 20th. Does anybody have any...
Are they any different from the ones we received in our packets?
I don't believe so.
Okay, just saying.
They're the same.
No changes.
No changes?
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay. Kate made it, Katie will second it. All those in favor? The June 27th?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor? Three in favor. Okay. What we're going to do tonight, what I've asked Paul to do, is to just use his copies and make whatever changes or revisions we need on these. I've got double duty because I've got to look at and see what Beverly has written for me, okay? So bear with me. I don't have any slips on mine, so...
Well, I just gotta go to each one.
We're gonna go to each one, all right? Okay. I think what we still need to understand is that unfortunately, there are a lot of policies, when you look at MAS-C, it means there, that's what we need to insert because we don't have them for the most part.
Right.
All right. So the first one is instruction bills, file 1A, or IA, I guess. Does anybody have any? Beverly's okay with that? I'm okay?
I'm okay.
Any changes?
Yes, I do have one. One second. Now, I would be, I had more of a question, and that is, in the second, the last paragraph where it talks about the operating function, it says, "The coordinating and developing function includes monitoring activities, curriculum development, in-service education, and special services." I didn't really understand the monitoring activities, and I didn't understand why curriculum development was in parentheses. Could we just ask Tim that question because it didn't...
Jim. You keep trying to change his name.
No, I don't know what I do. He's watching this.
She did it again.
Well, I do it at each meeting, so I get used to it, so...
Can you tell me what the question again is?
I don't understand that sentence, and I mean, I think it's unfair to ask Dr. Martis.
Second in the...
The evaluation?
No, see, the coordinating and developing function includes monitoring activities, curriculum development. Okay.
Does that mean that monitoring activities is, in fact, curriculum development? And if it is, then I just would prefer to call it curriculum development because I think that's easier to understand, but I don't want to assume.
Okay. So just asking that, does it mean both?
I mean, I would prefer to have it say curriculum development.
Because it said that coordinating and developing function includes curriculum development, in-service education, and special services.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Wasn't clear to me, and I think curriculum development might service better. And my only other note is that we will continue to say where it says district at Foxborough Public Schools right now.
Yes, that's, that's...
I'm fine with that.
That's understood. Okay. IB, academic freedom. Anybody have an issue?
No question, but my only, I think they should reference the US and Massachusetts, it's the US Constitution is a minor name. And it, well, they don't...
A legal reference?
Isn't it the US, it's the US Constitution and Bill of Rights in the first paragraph, correct? And the legal reference is the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And the whole purpose of, again, I would just like it to be specific, the first paragraph, I believe it should say, "The US Constitution and the Bill of Rights," and the second and last paragraph, the last sentence, should say, "Constitution of the United States and the State of Massachusetts." Wouldn't that be to be consistent? It wasn't.
Okay.
So we teach our kids.
Did you get that, Paul? Okay. Okay, school year calendar?
Okay, then May 1st, we don't approve the school calendar before, by May 1st, so that has to be...
We do it in May, but I agree with you, Katie, I flag that. I don't think we should say that it's going to be by May 1st. I defer to Dr. Martis.
What Beverly said is adopt, leave in note above school years for students, okay?
Just say for, the school committee, the school committee for, submitted to the school committee for approval, period, each, or each year?
Each year.
Well, I have no problem by May of each year because it helps to, because we do that, but that has always been our deadline. I just don't think we should tie your hands that it has to be May 1st.
Well, that's why if you, if you put approval of, you know, each year, then that, take the date out.
Well, remember, we do have parents who will start to call the office because they're trying to plan their vacations. So I think, and to my knowledge, in the four years I've been on it, that's always been done in May.
Well, so...
Well, we can talk about, I've, maybe just to type working, it's been a much earlier than that, actually.
Go for it.
So you'd be more comfortable...
You want to do it by May 1st?
It's not rocket science.
Okay, no, it isn't. It really isn't.
Would you be more comfortable with Dr. Martis?
Do you leave it in?
By May.
Okay, all right, then leave it in, by May 1st.
Yeah, we can live with that.
By May 1st or by May?
May.
May. Yeah, I'd say by May, yeah.
Okay. Leave out the 1st.
Yeah, so that'll take us a little time, but I think we'll try to do it earlier this year and see how that works.
Okay. All right, ID, school day.
I'm fine with that except the 15 minutes.
Yeah, me, too, yeah.
Because I'm not sure that that's our current practice. Maybe we see your...
What is it, sir?
Yeah, what is that practice?
It states the time, that the contract of the staff starts at that time, so if we were to have the children in 15 minutes before the school, there would be no supervision.
Right. Michelle's shaking her head no more. No, we, we all caught that, so that's the piece that we want to strike out, correct? The 15 minutes?
Well, I know when I drop my grandchildren off now, I have to sit and wait, so...
So we strike the 15 minutes? Sounds like we're on agree.
Yes.
What, you're going to put in its place?
Nothing.
So we're going to take off that whole sentence?
Well, no, but they can't come until the, to the start of the official day.
Prior to the start of the official day.
Yeah. Until this, in other words, take out 15 minutes prior to, and put until the start of the official day. Okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Organization of instruction, IE, I think the paragraph, the primary elementary, we have to change that.
Yeah.
Because it's kindergarten through grade four.
Right, yeah.
And then secondary level, one moment, and then middle level is five through eight, and secondary is nine through 12.
What about preschool, is that a consideration?
So we have to...
Well, no, it's really, it's not, it's an option for districts, but kindergarten, you have to have, you have to have a program in Massachusetts.
But you don't have to have a preschool program.
Students don't have to attend, but you have to have the kindergarten program.
Okay. So just change, realign those.
And the very last sentence there where it says, talks about curriculum frameworks, I'd like it to say the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks.
Okay. Oh, God, I better keep looking at Beverly's here, I'll be in trouble. She'd be like, "Did you look at mine?" Yeah. Okay. Instructional program development and program revision, IF. She's got okay to keep, I'm okay with it.
I'm not sure, my question, and I would defer to Dr. Martis, I think we may want to eliminate this because this was prior to the reform, and if I look at the next several pages of what MAS-C has, it's talking about curriculum development, and Dr. Martis may say to us that that's more current and appropriate.
Yeah, the MAS-C work is much more current and appropriate.
All right, then we'll eliminate IF.
This one I had, actually, was...
Tom, find it back.
It's an old...
Well, it was 1988. It was flat up and...
It's not, it's good, but it's not just, you know, you got...
Okay, so eliminate IF. All right, how about IGA?
The only thing I was thinking of, that last sentence, the second paragraph, whether we want to put in a further curriculum cycle, that we're going to regularly evaluate the education program to recommend modifications, you know, according to, because we have a curriculum cycle now, and I thought maybe that'd be important.
Alright, so why don't you put to the instructional program, according to the curriculum cycle? Okay?
And I would like to add the next sentence, "The school committee will vote to approve, will vote to adopt and approve, excuse me, adopt the curriculum cycle annually." I believe, isn't that what we're saying, that we will vote that from now on on an annual basis?
Okay.
Adopt and.
How about adopt?
Well, is it, Dr. Martis, is it adopt and approve, or is adopt enough?
What about review and adopt?
I think adopt is enough. Yeah, I think adopt is enough.
Do we need to say review too, or just adopt? Because we're, when we adopt it, we in fact are reviewing it, correct? So adopt would be.
Adopt is, I think adopt is enough.
So we'll say the school committee will vote to adopt the curriculum cycle annually.
Paul, tell me when you're ready. Okay, on IGB, I have a question under support services. "The assistant superintendent for instruction shall be responsible for all programs for educationally handicapped and gifted students, psychological services, to speak correction homebound, and hospital teaching and such other programs as may be assigned to the support services." Is that necessarily true, or does the special?
That's not true.
Okay.
That's, that's the director of.
Special needs?
But they're, they're not required, gifted doesn't come under the director of special needs, so would gifted come under the assistant superintendent?
Yes.
So we need to break that out.
Okay, so how do we want to change this?
I would just take out assistant superintendent, say the director of special needs, and leave it as it is, except for the gifted students, and then the second sentence will say, "The assistant superintendent shall be responsible for all programs."
Wait, 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 Paul can't write that down.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
And the assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction.
Yeah.
Well, we don't have a program right now for gifted.
Right.
Well, we've made, we've made stabs at it, and I think we need to do better in that area, and that could be under the assistant superintendent of the curriculum. The whole idea of the MASC specialist was that it wasn't just to help special needs, it was to help gifted, so it's not enough, but we are starting.
Well, as we're defining the roles, the administrative roles, and just roles within the whole system, under the assistant superintendent role, could be added this.
Is it really our role to write the job descriptions? No. That would be up to the superintendent to define and write the job description, not the school committee.
I think if Jim were here, he'd say that the reason this is in here under school committee policy is it's a strategic brush, and we're saying that this, these are organizational issues that we are agreeing to and still being out. How they get completed, we delegate to, to Dr. Martis, the superintendent.
Can I just say something?
Sure.
But if we, I mean, differentiating instruction for gifted children, it's not what I would consider though a gifted program. I don't know if the wording is correct.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point.
It would be nice to look towards that, but you're right.
We do do that through differentiation, but we don't have a gifted and talented program at this point, so to put that in, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it gives you the assumption that it's there, and it's not, Michelle.
Should we open it back up and say, for academic achievement as well as gifted? I mean, the assistant superintendent is, that position is, the thrust of that position is curriculum development, so that, and that's all about academic achievement. And in other words, we, gifted is just, gifted is just one end of the range. You might say special needs here is the other end. So would it help, Michelle, if we were to talk about curriculum instruction for academic achievement, to include both, the whole spectrum, including gifted? Is that maybe the way to approach it?
But this is under support services and not the role of the assistant superintendent. We're trying to define support services that we have in place, and it is in this category right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we, let's see, for educationally handicapped.
Maybe use some guidance.
Educationally handicapped and student psychological services.
What if we took out, if we're gonna make this the special?
This is director of special needs.
Then I would take the gifted part of it out of it. Okay, I would take that out of it. Because really, when you're talking about all these other things, that special needs, gifted students, I don't think falls in that category. Now, if you want to, if we want to add at some point the gifted part of it, I wouldn't put it in at this point because we don't have it. So why would we put it in a policy that it doesn't exist? Because then somebody's gonna say, "Well, it's in your policy." But if we don't have anything to back it up, then I, I think we're doing ourselves a disservice.
And you're right, Martha, it says support services and compared with that.
So let's take out the gifted, put in the special needs.
Director of special needs.
Director of special needs, and, and we'll wait and redefine after that.
Redefine what?
If, if and when we put in a gifted program, then we will address it at that point.
Yeah, let's, let's just, even though we've crossed it out, let's not forget.
No, we won't forget. I'll write it on the back of course, and then you won't forget. Okay, alright, anybody else have an issue with this?
Nope.
Okay, Paul, you all set?
Yes.
Okay, IGBE.
I was curious, I would have asked Jim Hardy the rationale for this. I know it's required for a reason, but where does it fit in in the regulations? And why are we mentioning reading and not math? Because I thought Title I, although Title I for math is either going away or will be going away for us, it didn't under.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a good, I'd put a hold on it.
Alright, put a hold on this and ask him, Paul.
Why reading not math?
Yeah, why reading not math?
Where does it fit in?
You know, don't forget, we're gonna get a whole nother set of these at the end that we're gonna go through one more time and ask him a question.
It just didn't make sense to mention one or both.
Okay, alternative programs, IGBH. Does anybody have an issue with that?
Well, one of the questions that I had was in the development, and I don't have the answer, it's a question. Alternative programs will be reviewed and evaluated annually for the first three years with a recommendation to the committee as to continuation of the programs. I guess my question was, what happens after those three years? It's, is it just assumed now it's an integral part of, okay? So there's not a need for a review of it? Okay.
Although the school committee can always request on the agenda, I know, a review of any.
You know, as to what's going on at this point with this program.
I would, I would just like to add where it's the third paragraph from the bottom, we're talking alternative programs, it ends saying, unless specifically waived by the board, that really should be school committee to be consistent.
Okay.
And we're striking out then the first three years?
No.
Or we're just?
No, because when you're starting a new, something new, you're gonna monitor it for the first three years, and then if you have any concerns, that's for that.
So that's a requirement that we have to?
Yes.
Okay, that, and I won't bring up it any further now, but I'm very confused by this category. When we get later on, it talks about alternative education programs, and I didn't understand why they're separated. Let's move on, but I want to be able to return to one of these.
Alright, curriculum adoption.
I have one little mark of it.
Oh, my God. Okay, we're all set with this. We might make it through this.
And the next one.
IHA. Alright, Beverly has, I like local history of government. Oh, my God, I can't read her hand.
All.
Being taught?
Yeah, I think so.
Alright, where is that, Beverly?
Under the paragraph where it says, "Shall give instruction and training," and it lists all of the topics.
Okay.
Local history.
Okay. Oh, what she's saying is she likes it and adopted, okay, alright. Oh, my God.
Nothing, nothing to change.
No, you know what it is? She put the adopt over on the right-hand side where it's all the other ones she had on the left. Okay, so we're all set with that?
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Next one, too, Martha.
Okay, basic instructional program.
Yeah, I said okay, too.
Okay. Who's that? I'm not gonna read the letters.
I didn't have a problem with that.
Okay.
This is Chris.
It's consistent with our wellness.
Occupational education.
Oh, I had a question here.
Okay, let's have it.
"Under four, be allowed the opportunity to develop an understanding regarding technical, consumer, occupational, recreational, cultural aspects, blah, 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 blah." The last sentence, "Should also be afforded the opportunity to develop skills related to such aspects through creative problem-solving experiences." I did not understand what the point of that was.
Well, I think when you're involved with occupational, you do have to go through a problem, problem-solving type experience in order to understand how it all comes about. You just don't do it. So they want, they want you to be able to walk through it.
I hear you, but I thought, Martha, occupational education is assisting in, you know, life skills and whatnot, and getting them, getting them ready in those life skills. And it just threw me off to, because I would have said, "Well, what are these, creative problem-solving experiences, and give me some examples?" And our parents say, "We want them," and that's the whole thrust behind the paid program, to not only have what they can with academics, but to, to make sure they're moving in the vocational end. And that's what the occupational education is all about. So could we just be simple and clearer as to what that is? Because I didn't understand creative problem solving.
Why don't we ask, ask Jim about that, okay?
And if it's basic life skills and vocational, then we should be using those words.
No, I know, I said, I almost said Tim.
If Jim doesn't give us the right answer, we'll ask Tim.
We really don't have occupational education, do we?
Well, we do, and we're, Ellen Pillsbury's been hired to keep adding on, so I, I just like to be very succinct and clear.
This would, that may.
Or even in dactytric technology.
I was just gonna say, that may also be part of what shouldn't be in policy, and that is examples of what you do.
Oh, oh, Dr. Martis, I wanted to ask Jim what he meant, to give us some examples, not that we put it here, because I didn't understand it.
Okay. Alright, so I asked it. Okay, health education, let me see, okay, she said it, I don't have anything on it. Anybody?
I have just a clarification. Is health education, alright, it's taught as a separate academic discipline in grades K through six, and as a separate class in grade seven and eight, isn't it?
It's five, six, seven, and eight, it's separate.
Yes.
So that's just a cleanup for us.
Alright, so go through K through four, and then go five through eight?
Yep.
Okay.
The roundness is divided up into the.
Yeah.
Get that, Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Parent guardian notification of, you know, oh, my God, human sexual education. It's a mouthful.
Okay, can I make a suggestion on this one? This was also in 99, but I think MASC may have this covered.
I think they do, yeah.
And I, yes, so I would suggest that we eliminate this one and go.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I've got. Do we really need this? We don't need this. Okay, on I, on parental notification, should we slash guardian notification? Parental guardian notification, not just parental?
Just say that.
Right here. See how it says parental notification? Should we put slash guardian?
On MASC, yeah.
Okay?
And this is not, this is gonna be as an exhibit, because it's dash one?
Yep.
So this is, this is an exhibit?
Yep, yes. And then the next one is sample notice to parent slash guardian, okay?
But this is the exhibit, so, no, then IHAM dash one is in the book.
Yes.
As a policy, and then the, the notice to parent guardian is an exhibit, so this is okay.
Okay.
Oh, I have a question about this.
Now, the other thing, the other thing is, some of this might be changing because the state kind of has gotten into the fray as to who gets notified and how, and signing forms and how we notify people, so this might be subject to change, even if we adopt this on a state level, because, Chris, am I wrong? Isn't there kind of a rule how about this right now?
Yeah, and I think one of the positive, real positive things about using MASC is that we then will have that automatic update from them.
Which is a good thing.
And we can bring it up at a future meeting if we need to.
Okay, alright, what have you got?
I have a question about the one E, the sample notice.
Yep.
We are reviewing our health curriculum this summer, and then some of the topics that are listed in that paragraph about sex education as part of the health education curriculum in grade seven, eight, I just wonder whether those are accurate topics that are discussed. I don't think they are. And so I didn't know if we wanted to just omit that and wait, or?
Well, no, because I think it gives you a very broad, broad area of topics that could be discussed. It doesn't mean they will be discussed. So by putting them all there, you're, you're kind of covering everything, but that doesn't mean that that's what's gonna be implemented in our health education. But where this is MASC, again, if it's gonna be changed, we'll get an update on it. But you could in fact include any of these.
Because I did have a question about one of the issues that, that, and I don't want to be, you know, picky here, but abortion being one of them, it's not discussed, in my understanding, at least, at least as I was told by my daughter, that that's something that the teacher told the class that if that couldn't be discussed.
Right.
And it's clearly written there, and I think that if you include some of these potentially controversial things, that, you know, I think we just should be very clear about what it is we can talk about, or what it is that we will, and I just.
Well, I think.
Why don't we use the sample notice that we use for our schools? We can still use the same format here.
Yeah, well, that's a good idea.
You know.
That's, yeah, that's a good idea. Use our own notice.
Say, this is what, so we're not.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay. So do you want to, do you want to scratch out? Do you want to eliminate it?
I'm just wondering, what is, what I'd like to know is what actually is being discussed?
Well, I think that's what will be brought to us.
Yeah, I think we use our notice.
Yes.
Okay, okay, so then this is.
So this we don't need.
This we can, this we don't need. We'll put in specifically.
We replace what our notice is.
Yeah, that's, that's fine then.
Okay. Okay, health education.
I happen to be eating potato chips as I read this. But other than that, it was perfect.
Teaching about drugs, alcohol, and tobacco.
I did have a couple of things here. I can't read where the line is. It shall include, the second paragraph?
Yep.
Second sentence begins, "It shall include special instruction as to the effects upon the human system." I, I think it should say physical, and then emotional, psychological, and social, because we spend a lot of time talking about the new brain chemistry and how that's being taught on, at both the high school and, and starting to be discussed in the, in the wellness program. So I think we should say physical aspect as well.
And when you talk about the human system, you talk about everything that affects the body.
You want to be specific about this? Well, they said everything except physical. That's what, that's what jumped out at me, Martha. They list, they take the effort to list everything except the physical ramifications, so that's why it jumped out at me.
Okay, what do you want to put in?
Physical, emotional.
To add the word physical.
These two might have to be updated as we're again, on this program.
Absolutely, and that's why, right, and don't forget, it's, what's good about accepting this is, like Chris says, we'll be getting the updates as they go along.
The only other thing I would say, because I'm gonna say it many, many times, and it is being aimed here, but remember, we do have a drug problem, but in Foxborough, we have a bigger alcohol problem. And we have said on our policies, and when we've talked it here, and we've discussed our form that we have, it's alcohol, drugs, and tobacco. And it's a minor nick, but I think we should be consistent, because I think sometimes parents. It's alcohol, alcohol, we did, I did.
Okay, we'll do it alphabetically. Alcohol, drugs, tobacco.
The other thing I was gonna point out, it says K-12, but wellness doesn't start here until grade one, so I don't know if you want to.
Okay, so what, twelve? Okay, that's a good point.
Okay, good point.
That's why we have you all here.
Michelle, do you want to join the table?
No, she doesn't want to sit here.
The chairs are softer. If anyone would like to join, the chairs will feel a little better. If anyone would like to join, the chairs will feel a little better.
Glitter from the strip.
Glitter from the air. Okay, special instructional programs and accommodations, programs for children with special needs. Let me see, does she have anything on this?
The issue I had on the title?
I have note to point out.
I think you should take out programs and it should just read, in the parentheses, it should just say special instructional programs and accommodations for children, children with special needs.
Yeah, when do I have, parentheses is there?
Yeah, I just.
There's no need for that parentheses.
Yeah.
Students probably.
We have said, that's another word, that wherever it says child in MASC, they will replace that with student.
Oh, they will.
They even had to use the word kid, so they, they know to replace that with student. And very last paragraph, it should say not just the committee, but it should say school committee.
Yeah.
Where was that one?
Last paragraph, it says the committee, it should say the school committee. And then the very last line, it says committee again.
I thought we changed the language somewhere along the line so that didn't read special needs.
Or?
Just in general, way back when, when we talked about students with special needs, there was, there was some, there was a new language to use versus that? Am I?
No, we still, um.
There's, there's, there is some different words.
It's under special needs, but special needs is really known as special needs.
I thought we had changed the.
Handicap is the word that's, it's really disability, or it's more appropriate, politically correct to use special needs.
A couple of years ago, we changed the wording on something. Isn't that awful?
Well, here, and I'm sure this is a requirement for, and that's why MASC has put this in because we didn't have, although we referenced it in the old policy, the E Q A wanted certain things put in our policy, and this is probably one, is a tickler also for grants and whatnot.
Okay, so we okay with this one?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, programs for students with disabilities.
I, just why?
Oh, why?
If you just, what we just did on the page before, why? And all I could think of is I D E A or there's something under.
Yeah, we should ask.
All right, ask Jim. Do we need this?
It might be that resident students name, like if they're going to be, if they're going to.
Um, maybe, because out of district versus.
Or even if they are attending a private school, we might still have to provide some services.
Yeah.
That could be.
Moving on.
All right. Just asking.
If that's what he said.
Just asking.
That could be, that could be.
The next one is gifted and talented.
Do we have this?
No.
This is good.
Yes, I know.
So there again, that's.
I think that was good.
No, good. We're keeping this.
So we're going to keep this one?
Yeah. I think we all like that, right?
Yeah. There it is.
I mean, if you don't have a gifted and talented program, you have differentiation right now. Before, you said that you're not going to put it in because you don't have it and you're looking towards it. But here you're saying.
That we have it.
You're adopting it and you're funding it.
But isn't the difference, Sue, that it, because of the, whose job it was under? The assistant superintendent? Because we don't have that in the, I, I felt that was more because of, we didn't want to put that under the assistant superintendent.
No, but you're, you're adopting a policy program. We don't have it.
You're going to identify with criteria.
Yeah, should be identifying and providing for students who want to.
I wanted this policy. We've talked about it and around it for years. Our parents have said they would like to get it because there are students who don't get it, and I would push us to say, let's then come up with a, let's come up with a policy. Okay? If you want to hold on this one, that's fine, but.
I think we need to hold on it.
Hold on it because it's.
Because people are going to hold you to something that we don't have.
Right.
So to put it in at this point, you're saying we have this and we don't. We're, we're going to develop it, but until we develop it, I don't think we need a policy.
Now, how will that become a top priority for the school committee? How will we make that a priority?
Because when we sit down and talk about goals, that's one of the things that will be put in there.
And I retreat in September. I think that would be appropriate.
All right, that's.
Okay, so we're all taking this out, and we're marking Chris's name.
Cool.
Budget, budget issue.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Compensatory education. I actually said.
I, I don't like the title, compensatory education. This, if this is all about Title One, let's not put it in parentheses, let's call it Title One education.
Is there a reason, though, why you say?
Well, let's ask.
There is a reason. I'm sure under Title One that we have to, oh, right, in terms of the.
Yeah, title.
Question title.
So whether there's a title, why is that called that?
Well, I think it's also important, and I would like the sentence changed, and I'm sure we'll need Jim to review it. To begin with, when appropriate and as required by law, Title One funds shall be used to provide educational services, blah, blah, blah. Because we're getting to the point where we may not qualify for Title One. Okay? So I think we need to make that clear. It's when appropriate and as required by law, we will then provide it. Because I think that's.
Okay, is that that, Paul? I'll pay one.
So when appropriate, required by law, Title One funds?
Yes.
Should be used, yeah.
Okay. Transitional bilingual education.
I think we need to eliminate this since it was seventy-five, eighty-seven. I think MASC makes that much clearer.
Okay, English language learners. You guys got any red mark?
Yeah, just didn't. No, 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 we're doing it.
You had a red circle, I saw it.
Oh, no, that just didn't remind me, it's MASC. It's the district, no, it's F P S, it's Foxborough Public Schools.
Okay, that's okay.
Home ban instruction. Well, no, 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 no. I have a question.
Okay.
We will not offer this until a student is out four weeks?
We do it, we do it after ten.
Ten days.
Second of school days.
Yeah, so we need to change that. Let's change that. That's what I thought, the second sentence.
Second sentence.
Ten days. Because we're not good. And we do not have a director of pupil.
Consecutive.
Consecutive.
Pupil services.
They said the week's ten.
I would love us to have one.
What do you want?
But we don't have one today. Second paragraph, it says, "This statement needs to be sent to," so for our purposes.
Special, special needs.
Director of pupil services. Where are you doing?
No, I don't, I don't know that that's fair to do to the director. If somebody's out for.
Right now.
Is that how it is? Okay. I didn't, okay.
Because we don't have.
Who handles it now?
Cindy Brunelli's office, the special education director. Because we don't have the pupil services with special ed and all those other.
See, I always thought went to each school where the child was.
Yeah, I would have thought it went to the principal.
I would have thought too. Yeah, to the principal.
Well, comes to us and then it goes up to there and they arrange.
They're the trigger.
Last paragraph, director of pupil services, Sue changed that.
Well, can I just ask, then, if, if it's, if the tickler is really the principal and under, you do handle that, then it's.
They handle it, but then Cindy isn't trying to try and find people to.
So who approves it? Yeah, but who approves it? The principal or, or the director of special needs?
If, if, if somebody is out for the ten days and has the doctor's note, because there's the doctor's note requesting based upon whatever it is, then if it goes up to the special education, it's because it's a valid reason. If not, we talk with the parent and get the kid into school.
That just doesn't make sense to me. It's, I, I.
But to coordinate them.
Now, that would go to the principal, that if, if somebody has a medical, it's hospital.
It does, it starts there.
And you know what? That's why it should say then, the, the, the principal.
So it needs to be more clear.
Are we going to assign this duty to the director of special needs and burden them when it, this paragraph is the authorization for the principal? Right? The principal actually will decide that, based on receiving medical documentation.
And then.
In the first step, I think it should be principal.
And the second one is special education.
She coordinates tutoring.
Right.
Right, second paragraph is principal.
And that's an easy part of the job, but it's really, right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Building principal?
Is two, in the paragraph two, and director of special education is paragraph three.
See, I would, I would think it would go to the principal, and it'd be up to the guardian.
No, you want it to be centrally.
Centrally?
Yeah, okay. And especially, I have all the tutors, what it costs. All that sort of.
I think it's more for high school.
Okay.
Okay, so you got that, Paul?
Yes.
Okay. Homeschooling.
It's a typo, second, second line, first paragraph, program meet, should say meets, S on the end. I quit, so we will only do this up until the age of sixteen? Am I reading that correctly? So if we have a seventeen-year-old who wants to be homeschooled, or somebody who's a senior, over seventeen and a half, who wants to finish the year doing homeschooling, they don't qualify? Is that what that means?
I wonder if that's just state regulations or.
I'm not familiar with that. We can ask Jim on that.
I have a question on, on the last bulleted area, Chris. It says a student with approval of school committee may be awarded a high school diploma if he or she has satisfied the department of Ed's competency requirements and has met the district educational standards for graduation. Why can't we insert pass MCAS? Because in order for us to.
Well, that's just.
And, you know, I, I'm.
Yes, absolutely.
That's the department of Ed competency requirements, isn't it?
Right, and it's part of it, but as it stands right now, homeschool kids, far as I know, don't have to take MCAS.
And they don't get a diploma.
Right, but, but it's saying here, a student with the approval of the school committee may be awarded a high school diploma if he or she has satisfied the department of Ed's competency requirements and has met the district educational standards for graduation. I would like to put including passing MCAS. Yes, no?
I'm fine with that, I think that's very clear.
I think we have to ask.
Yeah. Let's ask Jim.
Jim would say it's redundant, but I don't think that hurts Martha because if the parents look at this, they, yeah.
See, because these kids are going to be allowed to get scholarships or go to, to state schools, and yet if we have a child that doesn't pass MCAS and doesn't get a high school diploma, they're restricted.
Yeah. And Martha, one of the things I think we need to make a note here, Jim had said when he bolded things at the end, that was for our information and it wouldn't be.
Right, but I would like for us to know.
Okay, but I think your point is so, well, what I said is, don't leave this off. Leave this in as part of our policy because I thought that was good. Don't take it out.
When I read this, I was like, hmm, let's see if we can.
He put those in there for our edification, but that I think should be, the way it's written, part of the policy.
Is that okay to do that, Chris? Okay.
One other question. It talks about, one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph down, that there is a, we have a form in place that the Foxborough Public Schools will provide. Do we have this form? Or will we have a form?
Have you ever done that?
We get a letter.
I've done, I've done this in other districts, and there is a form.
But we don't have, but we don't use a form. They, they just bring the curriculum to us. We haven't used a form in the past.
Okay. Then I, I, then we should say proposed curriculum, because if we're not going to use a form, then we could just say, you know, bring proposed curriculum, or however we.
But they do.
I would, I would, we should initiate a form. We should, we should be consistent on it so that we have a record of it.
Okay.
So we, we can, I can make a note to myself, we can create a form, that's easy.
Could we also, so we're leaving form, which is, then we're clear on that.
Yeah.
It says, "The parent guardian is certified in writing on a form provided, that the place, age, place of residence, number of hours of attendance, and proposed curriculum of each child in the program."
Yeah, so while it is mentioned down below, the proposed curriculum, but that's fine. That's fine. That's all.
All right, now. Homeschooling, requirements for approval of home instruction will include. Has this always been, the superintendent will prepare, down the bottom on the fourth scene, will prepare for the committee annual summary of children included in home instruction. This report will also summarize in general the appropriateness of possible deficiencies of home education situations. Is that something that's done routinely, Chris?
Uh, no, I haven't done it. I've never done it. We, we might want to ask Jim about that.
Okay.
No, I think that's a, I think that's a very good question. We do the summary.
Because I've been here nine years and I've never seen anything.
No, we do, we do the summary, well, I don't know, I mean, I've done that in the past.
Right.
So as far as giving it to the schools. Working with the principals around curriculum and.
Have you given it to the school committee?
No.
No, okay. All right, let's find out if we, if it's something that needs to be done.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting. This may be, this may be a new regulation that they're thinking about.
Okay. All right, anybody else, anything on that?
Well, I think all of those A B Ns, you know, the committee at any time may request a review. The committee may request that the instructional materials and methods used by the person responsible.
No? Okay.
Yeah, that's, just all of number four.
Yep, all of number four. Because I don't think anybody's ever told us how many kids are homeschooled and what the, what they need or don't need.
We report to the D O E.
And we.
No, but not to school, this says school.
Just that we've had two. I mean, it's, that I'm aware of, we've had two in the past, but it's mentioned, but it's.
Right, that's, that's what I've done. But I haven't done this explicitly.
Yeah. So find out whether or not we.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, homeschooling, I H B G E. Does anybody have any?
I'm sorry, I have another question about the previous one, because that other page, the page two of the R. Again, it says here, number six. I G, I H B G, number six, the committee will act, if the committee determines that a home instruction situation is inadequate, I mean, there again.
Where are you saying inadequate? It's inadequate.
Number six, on page two.
No, six.
Where are you seeing inadequate? Oh, farther down, okay.
Again, it's putting a responsibility on the committee.
Right, well, that's why we have to ask, you know, how we're supposed to be.
The whole, whole thing is going to be on hold.
Right.
Okay, I thought just number four.
Until we find out whether people are really doing it.
Okay, all right.
Okay, on the homeschooling, I H B G E, Beverly proposed adopting it with the bold kept in place.
I think we have to, this is an exhibit, and it breaks down the court case, so that makes, it's an exhibit, so that makes sense. On page two, though, I just had a question under A, procedures, says, "The superintendent of school committee must provide the parents with an opportunity to explain their proposed plan and present witnesses on their behalf. A hearing during a school committee meeting is sufficient to meet this requirement." Is that something that we would do? Be one H.
The two of four.
Two of four.
Of I, H, B, G, E. Down the bottom.
And would we have that in a public meeting, or would we, that would be done in a special meeting? I can't imagine us doing that, because of.
Well, it would be an agenda item if you wanted to discuss it.
But you're concerned about exposing the child and talking about confidential issues with that child in a public setting?
I would just question and ask Jim, because I can't see us doing that.
The homeschooling seems to be a little bit of an enigma.
I understand the need for the school committee to give the approval of this, but I, I don't know that we would do that by holding a hearing at a public meeting.
I, I think the first thing is for them to approve it.
Right.
And for us to really not theoretically be involved with it per se, because that's their area of expertise, not ours. If they, to me, if they had an issue with it, or were at odds with the parent in the homeschooling, of what they were homeschooling, then it would come to us probably to act on, that's the way I look at it. So I don't, I don't see this as something that we would be doing routinely every year or whatever. I think it's only if they have an exception with what someone is proposing in their homeschooling.
For example, they're talking about somebody who's withdrawing their child from school.
And you want to make sure they have so many hours a day, what the curriculum is, that's, that's them, that's not, I wouldn't want to be involved.
I think if I interpret this, this is an exhibit, and it's based on court law, so I think why the school committee is mentioning, why we have to have a policy here, is because ultimately, this is connoting the chain of command for homeschooling. So both approval and in the case that there were issues, that's why ultimately, the chain of command will roll up to the school committee. But I would ask you, I don't think we have to say the hearing piece. I think we have to note that we're following, as we do in everything, the chain of command, because somebody has the right, whether they're an employee or they're a parent, to go to the principal, the teacher, the principal, the superintendent, the school committee, if they followed the, the chain. So I think that's all, that, that's documenting for homeschooling.
So I can note here for Jim to give an explanation.
Yeah, because we're not comfortable with the hearing aspect. We're comfortable with it would come to us, but, we would approve it, but not spelling out a, a public hearing.
Well, I think what happens is, if they're at odds with us, if we're going to pursue it legally, then the school committee, I would think, would have to vote on how we were going to pursue it. So I think that's how it comes down to the chain of command, and that's what, you know, where we get involved at that point. So let's wait and talk to him. Okay, alternative.
There's one on page four, four, there. It's number five, conclusion. And it's talking about, again, this is an exhibit.
Yeah.
I think to make it clear, though, if people really use this and read it as an exhibit, I would recommend that we delete the word "we" recommend, and just start that sentence as, with, "The superintendent and the school committee will review their procedures and approve criteria for home education plans to assure that they are consistent with the court's decision." Period. And everything else after that should be deleted.
Well, I, I think he's just giving you an example, as we would, they're just saying, "We recommend that superintendent and school committee," I, I don't.
Mm-hmm. If this was going to go in our policy manual, I'd like it to be meaningful, both to us and to any parents who might want to read it, that's all. It's not very clear the way that that's written.
Do we hold on this one?
Yeah, we are, we are, on the whole.
And review it by Jim.
Okay, alternative school programs?
Oh, yeah. Go back to IGBH, we have alternative education programs, and now we have alternative school programs. And I understand that there's a slight difference, but it's, neither is spelled out, made clear to me here. So how does this alternative school programs differ from alternative programs?
Well, I think down the bottom, he's saying, "Note, in a school committee's policy manual, it's often useful and informative to provide a brief description of the current alternative school programs, and to state the committee-approved goals and objectives for each program." So it's.
Alternative education is alternative education. Alternative school, and do we say that it may also like gifted, it may be a funding issue? I, I think we need to be really clear, what is it that we're having in our policy manual? Because alternative schools, whether you call it a magnet, or you call it a school within a school, or someplace else, what exactly are we approving here? If it's an alternative school.
Well, I think, read the last paragraph, "These alternative educational programs will seek to provide an appropriate academic, social, and vocational experience to aid these young people either to re-enter the regular school system, move into another educational setting, or prepare them for a successful appointment." I think that describes what an alternative program is.
Right. Then let's call it alternative education, and let's put this two policies back to back. This is not talking about alternative education, Martha, it's talking about an alternative school.
It's talking about, I think, if there's a need that comes up.
Let's take the paid program, that's right, and let's, let's house them physically in another, in another building. That's a budgetary issue, as big as the gifted issue. So is that really what we're saying, and what we want to have in our policy? I, I question that.
I think perhaps it would be good to have Jim define whether this is talking about, like, an out-of-district placement collaborative and those kinds of.
See, I don't see, I don't see it as that. I, I'm talking about a child who's not in school the whole day, who comes for just the bare minimum, and then goes off to an alternative program, be it vocational or whatever. That's how I'm viewing this.
And I'm with you, if that's what it says, and I think we already said that under alternative education programs. Now that it says alternative school, I'm, I'm leery of adopting that, unless we don't understand it.
Because it's saying, "We are going to the, we are going to put into place a program for these particular, you know, the description of these young people, where they need to re-enter regular school system, or go into another." So I think we need to be clear about what it is that we are providing, and tied, and make it more Foxborough, Foxerized, maybe.
All right, let's, let's wait.
Those programs that we have.
All right, magnet schools?
Is this necessary? We wouldn't have a magnet school here, so.
Okay, so no.
We can eliminate that?
Yeah. Okay, summer schools?
I'll let you go first. No, I'll go first.
Go ahead.
This needs work. It's not adequate, and I'd like it reviewed with Jeff Theodas, the department heads and the principals. Half the stuff here, I'm not even sure is correct.
I know.
Okay, so.
I think this is just MASCs.
And that's fine, but I think it's, we do, our summer school is more than reading and math. I mean, if you failed social studies and science, you're going to summer school, and we don't attend tuition-free, they have to, the, the student has to pay for it. So this is all incorrect.
Right.
Needs to be read.
Okay, all right, so send this to Jeff.
Well, the, we don't really go to summer school in the middle school, if you, if you fail, or do you?
Uh, this year they did.
Okay, so I think the principals, I think the principals who.
All right, so Sue and Jeff.
Jeff and Sue, I think.
You, you, you give this. Jeff and Sue. Adults attending day school.
May I suggest we eliminate this, since we don't have the money at two forty, yes? I don't know why we're doing elementary group practices.
Next one is yours, elementary group practices.
Can we eliminate it?
Eliminate it.
I think we can eliminate all three of these, because I think there's a need for it, and I think MASC has done that.
Yes.
Okay, so eliminate it?
I believe now it's illegal, so we'll talk about it.
I think it is, too.
So, I think MASC.
This one would be yours, middle school house team organization.
Oh, no, secondary school classes of fifteen or fewer students, right? Because we're eliminating all three.
What about middle school?
I think you need to eliminate all three, because I don't believe it's legal to talk about.
Middle school, high school, no, you're right, it is.
Okay. It was in nineteen eighty-eight, but it's no longer, under ever form, legal.
I had, can we still do this question, the ass report?
No, it's illegal.
I remember that.
So, we do.
All right, what, and the secondary school classes of fifteen or few students, this is in regards to what we offer, and if, Chris, what happens is, Jeff comes to us with classes prior to setting up, you know, the school year, and says, "I've got so many kids that want to take these, can we still run them?" And because it doesn't affect the budget, the class would be run anyways, but under our policy, we just have to okay it. Okay?
Then can you put high school? Instead of secondary school? Because it is really high school.
Well, I think when you go back through, the, the policies back here, I think they refer to secondary school as high school. When, when they did the K through.
What, they went to elementary, middle, and then high school.
Yes, but I think they refer to.
This isn't really done, though. In the spring of each academic year.
Yes, it is.
It is?
Yes. Yeah, Jeff has to come to us and tell, it's, I don't know if it's spring.
He didn't do it this spring.
No, he doesn't.
Well, it says in the spring, it wasn't on this spring.
When the kids pick their classes for next year, that's when he comes to us and asks us, "Can we run these classes?"
We don't get, we don't get the analysis. He gives us a heads up as to how the numbers are looking.
Yeah, I don't remember.
They do the schedule, no, 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 he speaks to it. We don't see anything that we study, because he comes back, then they run, they load and they, they run the schedule, and then in October, they come back, and then we get the actual class sizes across all of the schools.
So I don't think it is the spring.
So it's not, he, they refer to it, they tell us.
Why don't we just put each academic year during the scheduling process? I think that's more appropriate.
Yep.
Okay?
Now, the only thing I, I would like us to do, and I think we may need to hold on this one, because there's a cost factor, okay? And we've had this policy, and I think we want to keep the fifteen, but then we always overrule ourselves, because every October, we struggle with the fact that we have so many classes under fifteen. So my question is, are we, how?
Yeah, but I, I think the way we've always looked at this is, we have X amount of teachers, we have X amount of classes. If you have an offering, but there's only going to be nine kids in it, we just have to approve it. That class and that space is still there, you're not adding a teacher. But because of the way the policy's written, we have to okay it. So it's just really giving us a better handle on who's going where, and what offerings we need, and whether or not we need to add something. So I don't, you know, so I don't.
But is the number fifteen, or do we want to say when it's ten? I mean, here's the issue, we, we argue, and we always come back and we approve it, as we should, because this is a discussion that we should be having. There's a cost factor, and we can never, we're going to, the MCAS review for tenth grade math, that only has six students, we're going to go ahead and approve that, just like maybe only the four students for special AP statistics. But technically, it's under our fifteen. So I do think we should be alerted to it and discuss it. But the question is, we always get caught up in this fifteen. So I'm asking, as a group, I think we, I think.
I don't have a problem with the fifteen K, only because I think it makes us more aware of what the offerings are, and certainly fifteen or less in a class versus a review class that might have twenty-five or thirty kids. I have to tell you that if it's an AP class, and they can get an offering someplace else, and if, if we can do this, then we owe it as much to the thirty kids that need the review versus the, what we wind up with, four, or six, or eight, in an AP class.
Martha, again, I couldn't agree more.
You know, so I think.
I'm not sure what you're arguing.
No, I'm not arguing, because we're on the same page. I do think that as a group, strategically, at the school committee, we deal with this every year. I'm asking that, I have no problem with the policy, I'm asking that we hold it and discuss it, just like we did with gifted. It has, it has an impact, and we may want to, we, it's the right policy to have, and it's one that we have faithfully been following, but we get tripped up with this fifteen, okay? And I think because of the budget constraints, I would like to have a discussion with all the members.
What would you change it to?
Yeah, well, I don't understand.
What, what would you change it to? Five? I wouldn't go along with that.
No, I think we need to have a discussion on it, because it's something that we get caught up in.
All right, so.
And I think there's another way to approach it, which will also aid us in terms of the budget, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
But we have a discussion. I don't disagree with the policy, I think there's a reason it needs to be here.
Okay.
How we're going to use it moving forward, I think we should have a discussion, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, on limit, limit to number of study halls, grades nine through twelve, I, I think, I don't know if we need this, because time and learning, and they're supposed to be directed studies, so scratch that one. Out. Anybody have a problem with that on that one? Okay, evaluation of instructional, instructional materials.
Oh, this one, this one is Foxborough, although there's some good parts in it, but I'd like to improve the last one. I think we should move and look at the MASC one, and then go back and add the pieces we want from the Foxborough.
All right, so go to instructional materials.
IJ.
IJ for the MASC one. All right, so, do you have any red on this one?
I'd have put my whole pile, Martha. I'm sorry, Martha, my glasses are in my face.
Why is it not plugged up?
IJ. No, Martha. Really, it's okay.
Okay. Oh, my God. I like this one, too. Chris, I have a question, do we really need these forms in what we had with ours, or Jeff? Where did these come from?
They came from ours, right?
All right. Do we really need that?
Strategic consideration of materials?
Yeah, I believe we're, if we eliminate the Foxborough policy, could we eliminate the forms?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Terrifying question.
Eliminate.
So the whole, the whole Foxborough section is.
Yeah, out.
And we'll keep the instructional materials, IJ?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, reconsider, I love this, reconsideration of instructional resources. I think this is what falls under, we had those forms?
Yes.
Okay, so is that okay? Do you have any red?
Question, why, no, 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 why the three years? I didn't understand. Is that because it's, why would we?
Where you read the bottom.
Third paragraph down. "If the decision of the school committee is that the questioned instructional resource be retained, the district will not convene a review committee relative to the same complaint for a period of three years, unless a substantially differential point of view is advanced."
Yeah.
I, I didn't understand the rationale for that.
Well, it's kind of like a referendum question, once you've gone through it, and you.
You don't want it to be back there.
You don't want to keep, you don't want to be haunted by it.
Okay.
I, I think, to me, that's, that's how I looked at it. You know, like, when you lose a referendum question, you can't put it back in the ballot for six years? That's how I kind of viewed this.
And is that what we want?
Well, three years.
I would articulate here, I'm fine with the policy, I just, whatever we decide on the three years, I just questioned, why would we say three years? I think what this needs is, we need to add a complaint procedure. It will come up again in this other stuff, and the only nice thing.
Well, I think, I think the next sentence covers that, if a substantially different point of view, this.
No, Martha, let me finish, because I mean, the Foxborough policy was nice and courteous. It's outdated, but the way in which they said, and I think the purpose behind the reconsideration of instructional resources, is that there should be a courteous aspect that says, the complaint, if you, if you have an issue, what is the chain of command? We do that under health education, by the way. We've said to the parent very nicely how they will be treated, who they need to write to, and this just is really rather rude. So I'm fine the way it's written, but I would like us at the, to put in there, use the same language that we've already approved tonight in our other policies, and say, "A parent and guardian or citizen who is dissatisfied with instructional materials should present their complaint in writing to the appropriate principal, who will review the issue and give the complaint a timely written response." And then say if it's not. No, it's, I took it out of the Foxborough policy, and out of the policy under health education that we reviewed.
Well, all right, look at the, "When a problem concerning instructional resources in a school arises, the disposition of a problem will be made in a reasonable period of time using district-adopted procedures." I, I have to tell you, ten years I've been here, and I've never, nothing has ever come to the committee as far as someone being upset about what's being taught.
Oh, yeah, no, we have heard this year, over instruction, on alcohol education, on a number of things at the middle school, correct, Mrs. Abrams?
I don't.
We've had parents to come in who wanted to have the instructional material reviewed.
Right, they've come to them, they've come to them, but I'm saying, it hasn't, but it hasn't come to us.
No, we were one or two people who came, no, 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 we've had one or two people who have come to us.
Do you have any more?
In public meeting, we've had an individual parent who's come to us numerous times to talk, to crucify the middle school, and we've got to.
Did they come to you first?
Yes, they were asked to go back, and they did a couple of times, and again, and again, and again, and also the superintendent, and they came in front of the school committee. I'm just saying.
Yes, I heard about that.
And it doesn't happen very often, but I think we need to be courteous, and as we've defined, if you have a problem with health education, if you have a problem with the curriculum or materials, I think you should know what the complaint procedure is, and there's a nice way of writing that.
I agree with you, Kim. I think it would be nice to have a, a form in place.
It's the same, we've already written it tonight.
Well, you could put it right after using district-adopted procedures, that's the procedure.
Yeah.
No, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
This, this place that you pointed out, Ms. Lavery, the, the one that gives a substantially different point of view is advanced.
Yep.
That seems to be a logic impossibility, because once the committee has decided it, and it's not going to review, how would anybody know what is substantially different?
Because it starts with the school principal, and comes up through the ranks, and if it is something that's a different consideration, then it would come forward. But to keep, in, in the past, we've had people come back and just say the same thing over and over and over and over. It's nothing new. So if there's something that's different that you want to bring to your attention, and it comes up through the ranks, then that's.
Objectively, for one reason versus a different reason.
The, the, what I'm contemplating is, there are some instances in which things have been determined to be not substantially different, simply because it's not convenient to the authority making that determination. Today, we, we have it from this side, if today we had it from the opposite side, we would like the policy to protect us just the same. That's all I'm saying. To make it clear, what is the, the trigger mechanism for it, so they at least get hurt at some level.
You wrote it down, that's exactly what you said.
But I think the first.
Any language, any particular, any specific?
I can't.
Let's ask Jim if there's some other.
Okay.
If there's some other.
All right, so do you have, do you have a form there that's?
Yes, I copied it out of the health education and the other policy.
That may, that may also.
Nodly writing, so we're ready to move.
Frantically writing.
When you say the form, what, what does it say?
Form act, it's.
The form act.
For the chain of command, you go to the principal.
Okay.
They will launch you, and then you go to this.
Okay. Okay. Textbook selection and adoption.
Could I make just one second? I'm very comfortable with this, but I'd like to add one suggestion. Second paragraph, it starts out with principals, and I talked about the principals earlier in the first paragraph, so principals really confuse me. I would like us to just admit principals that apply generally, and just start that sentence with the selection, we should add the word criteria, or instructional materials, dot, dot, dot. dot, dot, dot. Everything else I think is perfect.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, let's say that is confusing.
You told me. You had to give me the last.
Okay. Second paragraph, it says principals that apply generally.
Yes.
Two, just delete that, and start with the selection, and we're going to add the word criteria. The selection criteria of instructional materials and library materials.
Thank you.
Okay. Supplementary material selection and adoption.
Martha, it's a perfect document.
Okay.
Martha?
I'm going to give you stickers tonight, Katie.
It's perfect, it's perfect.
I'm going to put a smiley sticker on your book.
I even saw Martha put it in here, it's perfect. Are there four for three, Martha?
We are, we are.
See what happens.
Okay, library material selection and adoption. Why is that different from the other one?
It's an R.
It's an R, okay. Oh, all right, okay.
But E is...
I had okay.
I forgot what R was.
All right, we okay with those, Chris?
Yeah, I'm okay with those.
Put you something. Library resources?
This is where I said, okay, why do we, why, how does this differ, how does this differ from I J L dash R? I'm okay with it, but how is that different than I J L R? Just like to ask Jim.
Well, because these are, this defines resources, the other defines adoption, selection and adoption.
How things are selected, yeah. These are the specifics. But some are library mater, I just couldn't understand why, because we talked three pages about library materials, and now we're talking about other library resources. So that's...
Jim thought he was getting off easy tonight.
It's okay.
That's a lot.
I'll tell you, he felt very badly about not...
He may save you a lot of time.
I think we might, but the problem is, when you book this many appointments, and then you have other things come up, you got to make adjustments.
Special interest?
Yep, special interest. Any red marks?
Um, yeah, let's see. Principals okay with this. Oh. Um, I'm, okay, the last sentence in the first paragraph. Any questionable instance, the principal should be informed and shall decide whether his use is in the best interest of the, I said, our principal's okay with this, I guess they must be okay.
Are you okay with that?
In general, when we get materials, we've conferred with the superintendent, you know, so that we are consistent in what we're doing, the superintendent is the one who's been making the decisions.
You okay with that, Crystal?
I'm fine with that.
So we need to add superintendent? The principals and superintendent?
How about in conjunction with the superintendent?
In consultation?
Any questionable instance?
You could just put superintendent.
The superintendent shall...
As opposed to the principal.
Shall decide whether it's...
So would you take out in any questionable instance?
No, you'd leave that in, in any questionable instance, the superintendent should be informed and decide whether it's in the best interest.
Or does the superintendent always?
Superintendent always.
Yeah, so I think you'd take out in any questionable...
Any questionable instance.
Start with the superintendent.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Curriculum and instruction, access to electronic media. Now, some of these comments are the same.
Isn't there a page that's in this one? We're on, curriculum instruction for electronic media, right?
That's math.
I'm very comfortable with this, but this and the other policies, I would just like us to have Paul Jackson ask Paul Bertolati and his team to review them.
Okay.
Because we did a great job with our computer usage policy. In fact, Jim actually said ours was even more in-depth than math, and we had our attorney review it. So I would, I would really like to make sure that our technology team, because there were some things, as I understand the web, yeah, it made sense to me, but we do web design, it's very different today in Foxborough than what this policy outlines.
Can I ask something when I read through this? Do you really change passwords every fifteen days?
No.
Six weeks?
I was like, you gotta be kidding me, I have a...
Yeah, the standard is six weeks, the standard is six weeks. That's why I'd like our technology people to take a look at that.
Because I was like, I can't believe every fifteen days you have to change your password. I have a fifteen, mine got to be...
Oh, that's, there's a sheet for protocols, that's why I'd like...
No, they don't allow us to do it, it's unbelievable, the way we do ours.
Under acceptable research policy technology, administrative procedures for implementation.
That's true.
Yeah, that would be good to review all of that.
I mean, I can't use the same numbers, I can't use the same letters, until five, I've changed them five times, it's unbelievable. Good thing I got five kids and I can start over again, that's what I do.
And it talks about web design, and we currently do web design differently, we pay stipends, and it's under a contract.
So you guys were looking at...
I was reading that, so I was like, that, the way we do that?
I think it's easy to clear it up, but I think if Paul Bertolati and his team will be able to do that.
Wow, boy, we get through right down to...
We're going to review all of them.
All of them.
Can we just, Paul, for your notes on I J N D, it says the committee, again, just putting the school committee.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to jump to field trips. Jim is going to be so impressed by us.
So we are going to, we're up to computer usage?
We're all the way through them, and they're going to do all of them.
Because that's what we did, that is really up to date.
Yes, yep. That's there.
Including the school and district web pages?
Yes, all of them were given to them.
Okay.
I'll pass the buck. All right, under field trips.
I've got a question.
We have two different ones here.
Oh.
First one?
The first one talks about what a field trip is, and the second one tells you what the regulations are.
Well, what, I, one of these combined, because I think it's...
Combine these two?
Yeah.
Paul, please.
And there's, on the field trips, the I J O A, second paragraph, it talks about, second line, evaluate trips and to ensure that all reasonable steps are taken for the safety of participants. I think you need to say the learning and safety of participants.
Okay.
And my only other thing here, I just, again, we need to be clear, the new regulations are, any overnight trips need to be approved by the school committee.
Yes.
And I don't think we spelled that out here in field trips, because it talks about overnight, these guidelines and appropriate administrative procedures, shall ensure that all field trips have the approval of the principal, and that all overnight trips have the prior approval of appropriate administrative level.
Well, it should be school committee.
School committee.
Approval of school committee, not appropriate administrative level.
Yeah.
Because they bring it to us, we approve them.
That's, right. That's the new regulation. We have to approve any overnight, because of the children of Newton that were killed. We have to now, it's regulations, we have to, the school committee.
Or you can designate it.
Usually, we always...
Our policy says that we will...
I know, I know what your policy says, but it doesn't happen like that everywhere.
Okay. So in other words, so you could approve it?
Yeah. Second paragraph, second line, so in other words, it says the safety of participants.
No, it doesn't matter to me.
So right before the the, we'll put a mark.
This is a little unusual.
Safety. Would you like us to change our policy, Chris?
No, I think your policy's great.
Well, we haven't time to work it.
That's the way it is.
No, he's very agreeable.
Would you like to have it designated?
No, no, but I know that it was designated to the superintendent in another district.
Well, we can re-designate ours, you know.
I'm happy, I just wanted to reiterate that.
One last thing for you to look at, okay. All right, community res...
I'm sorry, I just do have another question about that, just a suggestion, the guidelines and procedures should be developed by the administration and reviewed and approved by the school committee. Do we want to say how often that's done, annually? Do we just want to leave it?
No, it's as there being proposed.
Paul and I were talking about this today, as a matter of fact, and I do want to look at the, how that works.
Okay.
I think it's important to, just to make sure we...
All right, so why don't you review?
Because they change from year to year.
Well, there's some good sign off, so that you are comfortable with all the procedures that have taken place.
All right, so why don't you review this?
Spend some time with this, although, the last couple years, because of the new experience.
Because there's also, under the field trips, the I J O A dash one.
Yep.
It says all out-of-state or extended overnight trips and excursions, except those required for student participation in tournament competition or contests. Well, we don't, that's not a, our music program goes all over, and so they, they're not exempted from our policy, so I'm not sure that that, the way that's written is accurate for us. But other than that, I think they can be combined.
Yeah, I think we, my recollection is that the overnight trips for some of the sporting events, it was required with the committee, so we could take that out.
Yeah, so be all out-of-state or extended overnight trips and excursions must have advanced approval of the school committee.
Did you have anything else, Katie?
Well, okay, because you're going to be looking at this and looking at the field trips, because again, you know, superintendent will establish regulations. I mean, in my mind, you know, four regulations, so scantily written, so it doesn't appear sufficient. Do you know what I'm saying?
I think that's important, Katie, do we get that?
I think Chris is going to take it over, so that's all I need to know.
On the fundraising, just so that you're aware, I think that should also be subject to approval, not of the appropriate administrator, but also the school committee.
I agree.
Because we had some issues where, in order for the parents to go as, as, chaperones, they actually had to do their own fundraising, got to be very, and that will come up again. So I think if we say school committee, that will make that easier.
All right, so you're going to look at this whole time. Okay. Community resource persons, speakers.
Okay, I have a question. Do these individuals need to be queried, and if so, do we need to include that as part of our policy? Bringing outside people into...
It's a good question, when you have an outside speaker, are they queried or...
Yeah, but they're not going to have direct contact, they're not going to have...
One-on-one.
One-on-one. They're standing on a stage.
It's a good question to ask.
Okay.
So you don't need to make...
We, I've never seen that practice.
No, okay.
Yeah, that's a good question to ask.
Okay, okay. They're not left alone.
Yeah, they're called supervisor, because of their speakers coming into the...
Somebody meets them, somebody takes them to their designated place, somebody's with them, they're not wandering the halls.
Arts activity, dance group that comes in, or, you know, some kind of arts activity, typically wouldn't, because you...
If that's the policy too, that they're not left alone, I just think that's...
No, they're never, they don't come in and walk the halls.
If they would leave alone, they would have volunteers.
That we would mention.
Oh, I know.
Could I just ask for one, the first sentence says, human resources are those, individuals or groups? Could we just start this policy with, that says, individual or groups who are invited to the schools to present?
Yeah.
Correct, are those...
Okay, now...
Are those, thank you, thank you.
Under the volunteer, down the bottom, in compliance with state law, all volunteers that come, must meet a mandatory test, that's not true, so we could take that out, or negative just actually.
Can I, can I ask, if we go to the next one, but I'd like us to come back in a minute, because I think our, our intro was a little softer and nicer.
Screw one.
Oh, yeah, that's a nice, that's a nice, yeah, first paragraph.
So why don't we put that, keep the first paragraph?
Well, actually, we can't, we have to change it, if you don't mind.
Oh, my God.
Okay, Foxborough, wait a minute, wait a minute, put on next page. All right, wait a minute, wait a minute, the last sentence, therefore, okay, it should, it should read, therefore, it is the policy of the school committee to encourage volunteer efforts in the schools.
I don't know if it's a policy.
It's a nice way of saying.
Yeah, but it's like...
That's what it says on the next page.
Yeah, that's what it says on the next page. So it was a way of taking theirs and adding the nice intro.
Sure, that's good, yeah.
And is this where we want to have a reference?
Now you've got me confused as to what I'm going to...
I know, yeah. Under, the very, well...
Cross out after therefore and add the first second, first sentence of the next page and put a double space and make two paragraphs.
Right, we're going to leave with the old Foxborough policy.
Thank you, sir.
Foxborough Public Schools recognize. And I, I think we have to have a legal reference here, and that's where the query comes in, okay? Mass general law needs to be cited on this one. And I think we, we need to mention in here that school volunteers who have, who come into the schools and have one-on-one contact will, or have, they need to be queried.
Well, it's not just volunteers that come to the school, it's anybody who goes on a field trip or anything else that's ever queried, right, Chris?
Yes, I, just, is that, is that a different part, is there another?
I don't know.
Not on this one.
It's not in this section?
I think it should be mentioned under school...
So cross-reference it?
No, I think it should be mentioned under school volunteers and cross-reference. I think somewhere else, Jim said we will, because we have, it is a policy we have written.
I have...
I mean, it's not only that, but it's people come in and oversee a school dance or anything, they all have to be queried, so somehow we need to, and that all needs to be spelled out under the volunteer thing.
Yeah, so add that query and reference mass general law and the query.
I put volunteers must be queried to participate, you know, in school related activities or whatever they are.
All right, so you guys are going to incorporate that.
Yeah, we'll find it.
All right, academic achievement.
It's very minor, because I didn't understand, could someone explain to me what their take on number four is? At comparable levels, the school system will strive for consistency in grading and reporting, except as this is inappropriate for certain classes and certain students. Might I suggest that it's offensive and that we, we set in, that we're just striving for consistency in grading and reporting, period, and delete the except, where sometimes we'll be in that.
That's fine.
At the bottom, I would just like us to reference, and I believe the reference should be our strategic plan, because our strategic plan is all about academic achievement, and we should reference, that should be referenced.
So reference strategic plan?
The Foxborough Public Schools strategic plan.
Oh, I had a question.
Okay.
Some of these things...
Make it sound like a...
I know.
I'm not going to hurt your head.
Good, good. Okay, some of these things have to do with what teachers are expected to adhere to. So I'm wondering if this policy is something that teachers receive, because again, when grades are given, the school staff will take particular care to explain the meaning, when no grades are given, you know, the student is evaluated informally, are, this is a good policy, but is it something that teachers...
It's a good, that's a good point, again, it's something that Paul and I were talking about this afternoon, when we were talking about the policy, we were talking about when this is finished and voted on and approved, we need to take sections out and say, okay, this is appropriate for the principals, this is appropriate for the central office, this is appropriate for everyone, this is appropriate for teachers. So hopefully, technology will help us do that if we get a disc, and we're able then to pull off different pieces of it, and say, this goes here.
And this handbook, this staff handbook.
Yeah, this goes in the handbook, and so we're tightening this thing so it makes sense to everybody.
Right, exactly.
It's clear.
If it's in print, but if somebody doesn't have access to it, then...
It doesn't, it's meaningless.
Exactly.
That's right.
It's like having a policy book and not having anybody read it. It's like an exercise in futility.
Well, we're the only ones reading it, we can't do anything about this.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, to have it and not have somebody have access to it or read it, or, I mean, theoretically, every administrator is supposed to read this policy book.
Right.
So, I mean, when we came on as school committee members, it was our, but I have to tell you, it was a lot less papers then than it will be now, so. All right, so you will...
I, I think we can eliminate examinations, Martha, because this is pre-ed reform, and we now talk about our posting, our graduating requirement.
Yeah. I mean, I've looked at this and said, algebra, one student's in the eighth grade will take a final exam, it's like, are you serious?
Yeah, I know.
That's when they were up at the high school.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so eliminate, that sounds good. All right, student progress reports to parents for guidance.
I thought some of this could be a little more specific to Foxborough, but again, I think it speaks to how we're going to use these policies. In addition to the third paragraph, in addition to the periodic reports, parents will be notified when a student's performance requires special notification. Well, what does that mean? That's very interpretive, from a teacher's point of view, about when they're going to be notifying a parent regarding special...
To me, it would be, you know, missing homework, skipping class.
Be more specific.
I think it should be more specific.
I think it's also, you know, differences with a teacher that has twenty-two students and a teacher that has a hundred and fifteen students, you know, it could be the third homework assignment that's missing that you make contact, because there are, there could be so many, so it's...
That's, well, that's why I'm saying, I think it, we need to be clear about what...
With the expectations.
Exactly, and what parents can expect, because I don't think that's...
All right, so do you want to take a look at this, too?
Because right now, they get...
Well, it's a core issue, we always say that in principals, you tell all the teachers it should never be a surprise, but the parents get a report card.
It's a surprise.
That they were not failing at the progress report, but they are now failing, that is that, and we, and some teacher, it does still sometimes happen, and we get those calls, as does, as do our principals and the superintendent. I think it can only help with communication, if we're more specific about expectations.
So why don't you take a look at that and redefine it?
Any drop in student, you know, drayden, a drop in student performance requires the parents to be notified, that is in fact our practice and...
I do have another practice, but... I do have another issue with this too, regarding high school, because I think at the high school level, at the middle school, when the grades go home, parents have to sign and, and send back the envelope every, for progress and report cards. So it's, but at the high school, that, the only notification that's sent home is the final grades in the mail, the end of the school year. Again, I think it's maybe something to discuss, Jeff's not here, what is the all the laughing?
Because I'm thinking of my three boys.
I've been there five times, so I know what you're saying.
But that's a good point, which...
I think that there needs to be more communication with parents at the high school level, and Jeff's not here, so it's not something we're, but this is what reminded me as I'm reading this policy, because I think, I think, you know, if it's going to cost us more money to send things home, I...
Well, we will have that. Remember the student information system that we purchased? We won't have it, we won't have it this September, but by the following, parents will be able to go online and actually receive the report card.
We've been, we've been talking about that for a couple of years, so we're still in your way.
So that's a good conversation to have to bring up.
And that would probably change the policy, because it would really streamline the communication. It could be right there in the moment.
On top of everything. Can I just make one note? The last paragraph, it says, "Major changes in the reporting system." I think, given, I think we should just say, "Changes," I mean, our school council, any changes or changes?
Just changes.
The school, yes.
Doesn't have to be a major change.
The school councils do a very good job working with the principals and bringing, and moving that forward.
Homework policy.
I'm all set with eliminating the old Foxborough, because that's not going to...
I am too. All right. I was kind of taken apart with the second to the last paragraph. Homework assignment should take into consideration individual differences of students, such as health ability, conditions at home, and educational resources at home. Homework should not require the use of reference material not readily available in most homeschool libraries or the public library, and should require the use of those materials only when the student has had instruction in the use of them. I, I like it, because there is a lot of variables in what goes on and...
I've heard you say almost the same thing.
I think they listen to me.
One, the only thing is that last paragraph, I think it's confusing. It sends a wrong message to the parents and to the teachers with this in here. And given that homework was a landmine that continually periodically blows up on us, and I, I think our teachers and our school councils and our principals have done a very good job showcasing that, I don't think we need to put that in like how many minutes, but that's an area that we attend to. I'm just not comf, I'm comfortable with all of it, but that last paragraph does not fit with what we do here. So, and it's, it sends, I think, the wrong message to what we are desperately trying to convey to parents. So I would like to ask, I'm okay with this, but I'd like our principals to take a look at that. I think they would probably smooth out that last paragraph.
When I did it, you know what I was, well, you could eliminate, but...
Well, that's mine too. I'm okay with that. I would still like the principals to take a look at that, because homework was such a hot button. Does this policy work for you? Because we'll be all talking about it again, I'm sure.
I, I think it's, it's very philosophical, this policy. And is it really pragmatic? I mean, homework assignment should be taken into consideration individual differences? Again, I'm not sure if that, does that happen? I don't know if that really happens. So to put it here, I think that we're going to have to be very prepared to say, okay, you know, that, that we're adhering to this, so I, I don't know.
Well, I think that we, what we do is we take into account the time, the time factor, the, and that might be good to be clear. If the, if the time that the student is spending on it exceeds the guidelines that we have in the handbook, then their...
Maybe some language like that might be more appropriate, because this...
And I think you've all done that with the, with the updates and the reports on the homework, that all of the elementary and the middle school did for the school committee this year. That's why I'd love to have you see where you want to put in.
I was just wondering, like, even just those last two paragraphs, eliminating and maybe referencing that, the handbooks at each of the levels have more particular information on, you know...
Oh, cross-reference, student handbooks. Oh, great, yeah.
That's why I'm saying, I think it would be nice, it'd be more specific to Foxborough. That seems very general.
In the handbooks, it's, I think, much more...
It's very clear.
Yeah.
That's a great way. Would you still be comfortable having the principals look at that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
All right, so cross-reference the handbook, and you guys are going to look at that.
I'm very comfortable, yeah.
Okay, okay. Promotion in attendance, grades one through eight.
You could eliminate this.
It doesn't work. It's no longer... Promotion and retention of students.
It's a perfect thing, right?
Yep, it sure is.
It's a perfect thing.
No red marks, Kate? I'm impressed.
Perfect.
Okay. I, I wondered if, because I don't have any kids in high school, and I didn't, are these accurate?
No, this is, we can eliminate this. This is, oh, this is not, this, no. And mass does a pretty good job if I was reading this correctly.
So I was right, that, that's probably...
Okay.
All right, what about, wait a minute, let's go to the next one before we go to that one. Graduation requirements. I think this is...
That's the one you're in.
Yeah.
I do have the handbook.
You do have the handbook, okay.
The, the problem with this, and I believe that should say, that would say Foxborough High School.
Right.
So this is required just for the high school. We're not talking about graduation, promotion anywhere else. Indent for the last line there, "One year of physical education required each year of high school, usually four credits." That's not worded correctly. Don't, it's, and isn't the DOE, it's two, two years of, of physical education, not one year?
Right, but I think that's why they need to look at this.
Yeah.
Cross-reference, would you have them cross-reference this with the handbook? Okay, Paul?
I already wrote that one down.
So I don't think we have to get into this.
No, well, there is one thing that we do have to do.
Okay.
One other thing, it's, at the bottom, it says, "According to standards prevailing in high school..."
Where are you, where are you?
Last paragraph, "Credit for foreign study."
Okay.
I believe we would do this where it has come up, I think only once or twice in the past. The last line there should, "Standards prevailing in," it has blank, that, I don't know if they want to say foreign high school or the high school abroad, but they should, I think that's, they meant to reference that.
Wait a minute.
I think they're, they're evaluating the foreign study in light of the Foxborough standards.
Then that's fine. Sue, that does, that, that does not make sense to me. I don't know what that means. So if that's what that means, they're going to leave that blank. Standards prevailing in foreign studies?
No, in Foxborough High School. It's in according to the standards prevailing in...
Oh, so that's going to lead Foxborough?
Yes.
Okay, I did not understand that. And I would like to note here, and I think we already talked about, the passing of the MCAS test is required by the DOE for graduation.
Yeah, that's what I had down the bottom, okay. Me too. Okay, evaluation of instructional programs. Does anybody have an issue with that? Got any red?
No. Beautiful thing. Home stretch here. Home stretch.
Yes, I am. I am. District program assessments.
I would like to begin with, Foxborough Public Schools believes in a district program of testing for assessment and evaluation.
Okay.
My only question here is, do we need to put in the language, "May include but not limited to," and mention some of our tests? We may not, okay? And I believe the issue, it comes back to a budgetary issue, so we don't want to scope out everything, because we're going to be changing it. Looks like we're going to be changing it. But do we need to, did we want to do that? I just wanted to ask you that question. Should we note any of the types of, the types of assessments that we would use and that, again, to connote, to reinforce that it's district-wide? In other words, as a school committee, is it our philosophy to have standardized testing? I believe it is.
Yeah.
Okay, what we can afford is, is a budgetary issue, but if that is, I think maybe we should just say that that's, that is in fact our policy, that we want to have some assessment based on what those things are. When we talk about curriculum, we talk about the, the types of assessment, including standardized and individual assessment. I would just like us to use the same curriculum language.
You want it more specific than what the general statement here is?
It's so specific that it pigeonholed, it's, the point is, is, the whole point of this policy to say that we believe in assessment and standardized testing. And I would just like it to be customized to the language that we use on that. And I didn't write it specifically because...
You know, I, I would, I would leave it broad, because what happens if the administration decides that they don't want to use Terranova? We've listed Terranova.
Oh, that's what, that's exactly...
So that's why I don't want to list specifically. I just want to say that we're doing testing, it needs to be reported.
Does this do that for it?
I think it does.
Okay.
I think it does, Kate. I don't want, because it could change.
Measurements of educational achievement shall be considered as...
Are you okay with that, Chris?
I'm fully okay with that, yeah.
Leave it broad?
I'm okay with that.
All right, district program assessments.
I'm very okay with this, but this has to be reviewed by Dr. Maris.
Yes.
Because there's some things that I'm just not sure that you really want to live with.
Well, at this point in time, I'm not sure either.
Yeah. It sounded okay to me, but you would be the one stuck with this, so...
Okay, so you'll, you're, you're taking that one. All right, teaching activities, presentations. Do you have a problem with this, Chris?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask him too, because this is a...
I see one red mark on Kate's.
Oh, no, it's a typo. It's typo. No, it's Foxborough. She's saying Foxborough. Makes it crazy when you would say...
All right, so we all set with this one? Okay, teaching about controversial issues, controversial speakers.
I am okay with this, if you can live with this, Dr. Maris, and our principals.
Do you want to take a look at that, Chris?
I just had one question. I mean, it seems okay on page two, number two, the last sentence. It says, "For each request, the principal will appoint, after consultation with the requesting student group, an adult advisory group consisting of at least two parents and two faculty members." I think all of it is fine, except I'm not sure that that's what you would want for that.
Well, let's, let's let him look at it. You can work out the specifics, okay? School ceremonies and observances. Beverly's okay with this. Kate's okay. Katie is okay with this. Oh, my God, and even this kid. How about you, Chris?
I'm fine with it.
And that is...
Would you look at the time?
Marty, you know how to run a meeting.
Paul, did you doubt that we would get through this?
I did, I had my doubts.
Do you have something else for us? Or no, Jim's not here?
Want to stay a couple more, no.
But we have Jay, when will we get...
He wants to stay longer.
We don't have Jay yet.
No, we have not received Jay yet.
No, supposedly it's coming this week, and they'll get it out to us. When is the next meeting?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
I guess the question we need to ask Jim, well, because Larry had said we would wait to this meeting to decide if we need, we would probably need one, two more meetings.
Well, I don't know. We got through this.
Okay, but now we still have, we're still behind, we could, Jim said we could get through K and L, but we, but how big is J? Is that what you're looking at?
All right, let me see.
J is, we still, J, K, and L.
All right, so we've got the third, this is the third.
J is students.
J is students.
Okay.
Is that easy or hard?
I, that is easy.
We don't know. Well, we can, we can, we can work it out. I, I, I'm not going to hold us to it.
Let's go through J and see if we need one meeting or two.
Because we're missing two people to try and look at calendars, so it's silly for us to even contemplate it.
So my question, should we just have Paul ask Jim if that...
Yes. How much more time?
How difficult is J, K, and L?
I'm impressed.
Nice job.
Good job. All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Take a motion?
Oh, what did I do?
Yes.
Katie made it. Kate seconded it. All those in favor? Not bad, huh?
All right, good night.
Night, thank you.
Wonderful weekend.